Okay, good morning, everybody. I'm sorry. It's rhythmic. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our first public hearing on the 2026 budget. We're glad to hear those joining us online, those joining us on Facebook and YouTube, and all of you that are here in person, either to comment, provide feedback, or to just listen in. We are incredibly grateful that you're here tonight and engaging this process. The goal tonight is exactly as I just described, is we want to hear your feedback on the issues of 2026 budget. We'll have our Sedgwick County manager, Tom Stoltz, will present a quick briefing on the budget, and then we'll open a public hearing. For those that signed up here, you're welcome to come down. I'll call your name. You'll get five minutes over here, and then we are really eager to hear your feedback on the budget. One quick note, just to make clear, we have the Sedgwick County budget we'll be discussing tonight. We'll go through public comment there. We'll adjourn that meeting, and then we'll go immediately into the fire, the governing body of Fire District Number One. We also serve as the Fire Board. So after we adjourn that meeting, we'll open up for the Fire District as well. So there'll be two separate public hearings tonight that we will work ourselves through. So with that being said, 6:02, why don't we get to work? Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Invitation to be observed by a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Blubow.
Present.
Commissioner White. Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Meitzner. Chairman Beatty.
Present. Next item, please.
New business, item A, public hearing regarding the 2026 Sedgwick County budget.
Manager Stoltz.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioner Tom Stoltz, County Manager. This evening is the first public hearing for the 2026 recommended budget. Sedgwick County's recommended operating budget totals $593,553,400. This budget will be supported with a property tax levy of $210,524,468, which is approximately equivalent to 27.881 mils, based on the estimated assessed valuation and subject to technical adjustments. I recommend you open the public hearing, receive comments, and close the public hearing when it is over.
Okay, Tom, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Tom? Okay, seeing none, let's move ourselves forward. We will officially open the public hearing concerning the Sedgwick County 2026 budget. I'll call our first speaker to the podium. First speaker is Janet Sprecher. And good evening, Janet. If you can just name an address for the public record, our county clerk will give you five minutes.
My name is Janet Sprecher, and my address is 818 East Rough Creek Loop in Derby, Kansas. Good evening. My name is Janet Sprecher, and I serve as the Executive Board Chair for the Kansas State Extension Program in Sedgwick County. Kansas State Extension is dedicated to improving the lives, livelihoods, and communities of Kansans through education, research, engagement, and leadership. In Sedgwick County, our extension professionals collaborate with numerous local organizations to provide educational resources that address the challenges faced by many residents. The Sedgwick County funding for the Extension Program was reduced by 10% in the county's 2025 budget. In response, the Extension Board approved the reallocation of Schick program funding to now cover 90% of our adult development and aging salary. Previously, funds from the county were used to cover that agent's salary. With the anticipation of additional reductions in the 2026 budget, we will be eliminating two educational outreach positions in the 4-H Youth Development Office. This will significantly reduce the level of education outreach the 4-H office is able to provide to Sedgwick County schools, McConnell Air Force Base family programs, and nonprofits such as Boys and Girls Clubs and the Envision Early Childhood and Development Center. The Extension Board understands that the county government has to make difficult decisions regarding balancing budgets. However, continued reductions in funding levels will significantly impact the resources that the Extension Office can provide to support the residents of Sedgwick County. I would like to briefly discuss a few areas where extension agents are making a positive impact for those who live in Sedgwick County. The availability of water to support our current industries and population, as well as future growth, is critical to the economic health of the region. This board recently heard from the horticultural agents, Matt McKernan and Abby Drought, about how they are working with the city of Wichita to come up with drought plans moving forward. Agronomy Agent Jeff Seiler develops wheat test plots each year in several different locations across Sedgwick County. His data from the test plots is available to local wheat farmers and others involved in ag production. I recommend that you check out his interactive wheat plot tour available on the Sedgwick County Extension website. Jeff's 2025 harvest information will be posted in the next few weeks. Jeff has received high praise from farmers who have participated in his wheat plot tours. One farmer called Jeff's Wheat Test Program the gold standard for such programs in Kansas. Nutrition Agents Sarah Sar and Lori Carr are working with Wichita State to bring nutrition education to underserved areas of Northeast Wichita. The agents are working with local businesses to make nutritious food available through the pilot of the Healthy Corner Store Initiative. These are just three examples of the research-based educational work done by Sedgwick County Extension professionals every day. Through the years, the Extension Program has enjoyed a strong and positive relationship with county government leadership. We are appreciative of the support you have provided to us, which has enabled our staff and volunteers to make a meaningful difference in the lives of Sedgwick County citizens. The mission statement of Sedgwick County Government is cultivate a healthy, safe, and welcoming community through exceptional public services, effective partnerships, and dedicated employees. It is notable how the work of the Sedgwick County Extension Program aligns with and supports this mission. The Sedgwick County Extension Board respectfully requests that she reconsider the proposed 5% reduction for extension funding in the county's 2026 budget. Additionally, we are deeply concerned about the potential for any further funding reductions in the years ahead. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Janet. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. Janet, thank you for being here. Don't go away too quickly. I might have questions for everybody that speaks tonight. So first question, I'm just curious on the K-State Extension Center. Does K-State provide any funding?
For the actual facility itself?
Whichever, the entire organization. What does K-State provide for? The facility, the programming, what do they provide out there?
The K-State provides a certain level of salary support for all the different agents that are actual K-State employees.
So what's the total budget for the organization for a year? Do you have any idea what the last year's budget total was?
Including the unencumbered balances and all that that worked through, it's about 1.5 million.
Okay, so we're talking about a $31,000 cut. So no, I'm not trying to pick on you, and I appreciate you coming tonight. We've been friends a long time, okay? For anybody who asks for restoration of funding or for more spending in some particular part of the county, I guess I have two questions. Let me ask them to you, and I'll ask them to everybody else that speaks tonight. Do you support a tax increase, or do you support shifting money from somewhere else in the budget to restore this funding? Is my first question. And I'll get to my second one in just a moment. So first off, do you support a tax increase or shifting money from somewhere else in the budget to provide the $31,000 to Extension?
I would look at what the Extension Office is providing and the services to the county and to the residents, and figure out where we fit and how that can be supported. And so I would look for rearranging.
Yeah, so we have, you know, I will tell you, the Extension is very important. I think you guys do great work, and it's very valued in the community. The question is, do we support a tax increase to get the money to provide the funding that you're asking for? Because I don't think there's any place else in the budget to get the money that someone else is going to be saying, we have surplus funds, let them have some of our money. That's not going to happen. So no one's getting all that they want. Some people are getting exactly what they want but nothing more, if you will. Maybe a few agencies are getting what they want, but we had $10 million with requests we didn't fund at all. And so there's really not extra money in the budget to shift it. So really, I guess it would be more of a tax increase. And we have some public safety concerns this year, too. So public safety versus, this is community development in this case, $31,000. I would just say it's probably going to have to be a tax increase to do that. So second thing, I've been talking about this for a number of years. Do you support, for everybody else's too when you come up, do you support a sales tax initiative that would shift the revenue from property taxes to sales taxes? Will you support an initiative next legislative session to make that happen?
I have mixed feelings about sales tax initiatives, and it depends on how it is done. It depends on if it is a permanent or if it is a temporary that has to be renewed on an ongoing basis. So it would totally depend on the proposal that was put forward as to how it was crafted and the support that would be gained by it.
We haven't agreed on this yet, so it's part of our discussion, but my proposal would be, it would have to be a sunset in 2030, so it would be four years, maybe be voted upon in 2026. It would be revoted upon in 2030, then every eight years thereafter. So it'd be a continuing sunset. And if ever fails to get a majority vote of the electors, then it would just be sunset permanently at that point. But that would give us some property tax relief, and it would shift the cultural rec, the things like this community development program, over to sales tax. And I know there's some concerns about sales tax, how it harms certain people, but I understand property tax already harms them. So we want to shift the burden from property tax, I do at least, from property tax to something that's more discretionary and is less harmful to people who are low income. So yes, it would have a sunset if I have what I would like to see go forward. So with that in mind, everyone is getting a cut this year. I'd like to know, are you going to be willing to support us to move forward with the sales tax initiative to get this revenue off of property tax? I've been talking about this for years. I'd like to see support by our agencies that are receiving some cuts this year to get on board loudly and passionately, help us pass the thing that's going to help you down the road. Because as long as you're on property tax, as far as I can tell, these cuts can never stop until you hit zero. That's what I think the future is going to be. So every year, you're going to see a cut, and restoring the funding now, in my opinion, is very unlikely. But that's just my opinion. But thank you for your testimony tonight. Thank you.
Janet, thank you. Appreciate your feedback. Okay, next up, Ms. Andrea Sisco.
Good evening, County Commissioners. My name is Andrea Simonson Sisco. I live at 5015 Jade. I live in the Oaklawn Improvement District area, and I am here to thank the Board for their diligently hard work on helping the seniors that live in my neighborhood, as well as other seniors that live within Sedgwick County. And I am hoping through the years to come that you will continue to look at the needs of seniors as your Board moves forward. Thank you.
Andrea, thank you so much. Appreciate your feedback. Okay, next up, Ms. Joni Harris.
Good evening. Joni Harris, 109 West Chippewa Street in Key Chai. Good evening, County Commissioners. Thank you for the ability to be before you and to address you on the 2026 budget. There has been increasing discussion regarding collaboration, streamlining county government, modernizing government partnerships, shifts of some cost to a potential sales tax initiative, to increase costs of competitive wages and retaining good employees, and recently a community hall, town hall that identified by the community the needs for family and community well-being and mental health and social services, just to name a couple of the top ones that came out of that. I appreciate those ongoing conversations. How does government provide mission-critical services while reducing the heavy burden of property tax that is upon all the property owners that's increasing? We're all hearing the same thing. I attended a cab earlier this year that shared some results of the demographics from the emergency winter shelter, discovering a population that they were serving that was a surprise to hear, and it was our seniors, that they needed shelter due to lost homes, they can no longer afford them, they've been pushed out of their homes due to the inability to pay their property taxes. And so this is a big issue that's coming forward now. Even in my own town, I have senior neighbors who are not certain what the future holds for them. They could sell, but they can't afford to purchase a smaller home and the associated costs, because most of those senior centers now have HOAs attached to them, and they can't afford to pay those services. I have another neighbor who's close to the breaking point of not being able to pay their rising property taxes. Their assessed value increased 23% this year on a home they built 30 years ago. They aren't realizing the increased value, and their income has not increased because they're now retired and on fixed income. He's 70, she's 80, she's 70, and they deal with health issues. In addition, hearing an EMS report that nearly 70% of calls are non-transport, and a high volume of seniors are calling for various non-emergency reasons needing assistance, but perhaps not having a primary care doctor or the ability to transport to where care would be able to be received. It's nearly impossible to find doctors here that take Medicare. I know this personally, because when we moved to Kansas three years ago, it took two and a half years to find a doctor for my mother, who is 82. Yes, the county is looking at providing increased services, but if we don't begin to address root causes, we have a serious problem. And the need is ongoing, and expanded services will continue to increase annually. And then we're now on an escalation up, but then more and more people are going to get dumped into the system. Affordable housing options really do not exist here. Most developers and investors do not desire to build affordable housing, as there's little to no profit in doing so. I really encourage deeper conversation regarding root cause complex issues, because these are complex issues. These are not simple issues, no matter what we're talking about, involving government services, whether it's county, city, wherever, and taxing and services offered. It's very complex. So how does a governing body balance the ongoing need to increase social services ongoing, but that in itself is causing potentially more problems if people can't pay their property taxes? I've also listened to multiple conversations regarding 911. I understand the functionality issues that this budget is addressing with the proposed 20 additional positions this year. That is a lot of new positions in one budget cycle. I have asked questions at two cabs now, as Key Chai's police chief has instructed all citizens to call 911 for all needs, and they're utilizing it as their central dispatch center. Perhaps this is a common practice across all municipal police departments throughout Sedgwick County, or maybe it's just some who are doing so. We moved here from another state that repeatedly reinforced 911 is only for emergencies. Yes, everybody in Sedgwick County pays county taxes that supports 911, but this is another potentially complex issue that I believe needs to be addressed. Can we not establish a non-emergency number so dispatch throughout Sedgwick County be centralized for sheriff and municipal police departments? So I really want to encourage you to have in-depth conversations, seek additional clarification and data that shows actual emergency calls compared to non-emergency, and consider a slower implementation of new employees into our emergency communication system. I desire a well-staffed and successful 911 operating system, don't we all? But 20 this year, and I've heard now more next year, this is a huge jump. Please reconsider. And in closing, are these multi-agency conversations we need to have? And I just really appreciate that you try to lower that 5.5% capture. Thank you. Any questions?
Joni, thank you so much. And that sound you're hearing is a five-minute.
Yes.
She's not getting a phone call, it's actually the five-minute timer. That's what I wanted to clarify. Thanks, everybody. Joni, thank you so much.
We're good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up, Mr. David Thorne.
Good evening. David Thorne, 1410 Twin Lake. Been here a while. I'll never forget the cool February this year, all I could hear was like ringing inside my head, and I turned a little bit to my right, and there were airbags. When I got the phone to dispatch, this professional added, let's say, a very calm bit of clarity to the situation, the chaos I was in. I'm very grateful for what's going on in the Emergency Communications Center. I've had the pleasure of serving as Chair of the Citizens Advisory Board for the Emergency Communications for a while now, and I have some receipts of all the support. I'm not saying I have a lot of receipts, but CVS Pharmacy called me and asked me how I came up with so many. Some incredible accomplishments have been made. I'll just keep my remarks pretty close to what is on the budget here for this year. But if you haven't seen the dashboard, some incredible numbers coming off the dashboard this year so far, almost 38,000 calls, last year 71,000, year before 68,000, year before 67,000. I believe they do incredible work. We've had a chance to deeply review the Jensen Hughes Report that came back from that tragedy, and a lot of other things involving the community, community awareness, community support, and usage of Emergency Call Center. The last meeting, June 26th, one of the items on the agenda was regarding the budget, and several areas were covered, including the 20 new positions. And really, this referenced the thesis for those new positions being the dichotomous two headphones, two headsets. And I think our dispatchers and call takers, I think they do an incredible job, very quick. They seem to have a way to communicate across, let me get it right here. How many different places are they communicating across here? Really, six different law enforcement, you've got just a lot of areas they cover very well. And if you've ever been in there, you've got a chance to see what they do. Turnover is an issue certainly with staff, and I was here in this room just in May for graduation of new dispatchers that were trained, and just to see the smiles on their faces and their resolve to serve the community. I do believe that the thesis for the 20 dispatchers, based off of the Jensen Hughes Report for that dichotomous call-taking, to separate those headsets, I do believe that to be flawed. When we discussed that in the Board, we did not have consensus for supporting that. There were a lot of questions. One question is, will they be able to do as good a job, as quickly and crisply, if there's two people involved instead of one? I know it's been done both ways across cities like Wichita, and I have respect for the fact that there's a lot being covered. I want to make sure I have some time to answer any clarification questions, so I will end my comments there.
Okay, David, appreciate your feedback. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You said that there are other cities like Wichita that are areas like this county, I guess, that have the separate headset. Can you please explain? Do you find places that do and some places that don't? What are you saying exactly?
We've been told there are places that do, places that don't.
Do we have any data yet to kind of look at? I mean, I don't know where the data is coming from, but is there data to study that's available that you know of?
I believe we covered that in our December meeting. I don't have notes from that here with me.
Okay. And you said there wasn't a consensus on the 20. Is there other, are there other ideas that the Advisory Board would be interested in? Well, first of all, do we, any problem that you want to look at, you want to first of all define the problem? So have you guys defined a problem to be solved, and what other solutions are out there that have been discussed?
Well, I think the problem is that we want to make sure we're supporting public safety and not shorting it. And in my personal opinion, the Call Center is already run fairly efficiently. The problem of efficiency and tied to budget is a problem really that this Board up here will have to address, and that is tied to, are there efficiencies across municipalities that can be achieved, rather than just saying, find a way to trim a little bit here and there. I don't think there's a lot you can go and trim in the current Call Center the way it is. But when you go from less than 100 positions to adding close to 25% more, it kind of raises the question, where's that efficiency? In the April meeting, there was a discussion of moving from where we are at to 43 total. I'm hearing now maybe 38. I don't know what the final number is. I know that that's a significant add. I'm going to look at Tom for just a minute. I think the plan is 38 over two years. Is that correct?
I think, Commissioner, I think the plan is if the Commission allows the addition this year, I think the Director wants to take a look at what that does for operations and make a decision on that after seeing some actual results. I think there is a plan to ultimately, at least on paper, go to 38, but I don't know that she wants to commit to that at this particular time. I think she wants to assess as we add and not go, as the point has been made, not go overboard on this, but do enough to stop the didactic listing and create some other kinds of efficiencies. So I don't know if she's committing to anything in the future on that just yet.
And these next questions may be more appropriate for Laura if and when she speaks, but I guess, someone at the Collaboration Board that I chair, they raised the issue of the idea of having a second person providing the dispatch for that. There was some concern by at least someone at the table that there was some concern that they may actually add a little bit of time to the overall call length, because you have one person that is typing it in, someone else has got to receive the information, and they don't know what they don't know. So there's got to be some kind of information, you know, awareness, this being picked up by the second person before the dispatch. Actually, I don't know exactly the details of exactly how that works, but there was a concern on that about potentially a lengthening of the overall response time, because you have two people involved in doing then what right now we have one person doing. Is there any thought to that?
It's certainly an organizational-level disruption to the current structure, and there are a lot of valid questions along the line of why are we answering a preference and not a problem?
And then, and you're looking at other cities, what they do, is there any, someone already mentioned it tonight, Joni did, I think, but talked about the non-emergency line as being something we ought to take a look at. Is there any discussion by your Board on that topic?
Yeah, that's been a top-three issue for us, and I'll just say that there is consensus on the Board, person by person, for having something of that structure, non-emergency line. There are a lot of challenges tied to it, and the Director's aware of those challenges, and we kind of ended up in a position of, we need to challenge this Board to see if there are some efficiencies across municipalities for dealing with non-emergency line. As we heard earlier tonight, if we have non-emergency line, but some cities are saying, call 911 anyway for all issues, then we're kind of losing the value of that non-emergency line.
I'll just go to the Budget Book on page 239. It makes a statement that says, this is 2024 date, I guess, answered, yes, it's 2024, answered 7,756, 969 calls in 2024, with 507, 422 being emergency calls. So just doing the math, that's roughly 66% of the calls, according to this, are emergency calls. I'm just wondering, where do they define the word "emergency"? Does that mean life and death, you know, high-speed response, and someone not breathing, or having a baby at home, or someone submerged in a car? What constitutes an emergency versus something, maybe someone twisted their ankle, needs to get to the doctor or the hospital, or someone fell out of bed, needs to get picked up? What exactly is an emergency versus a non-emergency? How is that defined? Do you know that?
Now you are defining a Now you are defining a, an actual problem.
Okay.
Across the community, there are different opinions and thoughts on that, and that's part of what we're trying to address as a board. Keep in mind, in the budget request for 2025, there was discipline-specific dispatching of 12 resources for just under 1.2 million that was in that. So this is not a new request to expand personnel. It's just, the thesis is different this time.
And I believe last year, we did add about 10 FTEs to this department last year, according to my book here. So there has been, you know, if you go back numbers of years since I was here, I've been here a while, we have enhanced the department significantly since I've been here. So I don't want to forget, we've been making progress every year, but I don't know if this, anyway, I guess when I look at this topic about emergency versus non-emergency, I have a lot of questions. I'd like to know more about that, and whether or not the two, the didactic, you know, two headset solution is the right answer, or if there's something else we could do that would be maybe even better.
Yeah, we see no, sorry, Commissioner, we see no connection between the dichotomous dispatching, call-taking, and a non-emergency line.
All right, thank you.
But if done correctly, I think you can find some efficiencies across all personnel.
Mr. White?
I had my Citizens Advisory Board meeting last night, and we were able to hear the recommended budget as a, my board was able to hear it, and one question that came up, or maybe clarity that I think you might be able to either confirm or deny. I've struggled with the number 20. I don't know why that number, I think I know where I'm at in supporting 911 and the needs that we have there. I think it's really important that we are listening to that. My question is, help me understand, in order to fill one full-time 24-hour shift, how many people does it take to fill a 24-hour shift?
Well, Director Prichet would be better at answering the question. What I have here is 11.
Okay.
Nine dispatchers and two relief, not including those from Calm Care.
Okay. So I guess I'm wondering if the 20 is to cover a 24-hour shift, is that a magic number? I thought maybe, and Tom, you were there, but is it seven people cover a 24-hour shift?
Whether you're talking police officer, dispatcher, fire person, we have to have a person in a seat or at a post to cover 24/7, seven days a week, allowing for sick and vacation and leave and injury, and et cetera, et cetera. The number is generally seven, is the number.
Okay. And I don't know if you'll be able to answer that, but that was a part of my question, is the number 20, because it actually is tying back to covering a 24-hour shift, because we know that 911 doesn't sleep, so if you don't have that, that's okay.
I don't have a breakdown for the 20, or the 38, or the 43 for the moment that came through.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Okay, David, thank you, appreciate it. Okay, next up, Ms. Faith Martin.
Hi, Faith. Faith Martin, 608 South jury. I get to see you guys for the second time this week, well, some of you. We're at the TRI Collaboration Board meeting. I would like to start out with something I don't normally do, and thank you guys so much for your support of some specific departments and their budget asks. One is MABCD. For a lot of people that don't know, MABCD is a, not only a revenue generation source, if you look at the budget, they make a lot of money for this county, and also they solve a lot of problems. If you've ever had issues with neighbors, or cars, or weeds, or vacant buildings, they come in and they do the work. So thank you so much for getting rid of those two part-time heads that you couldn't fill and adding a full-time head, because it's much needed. Also, thank you for your support of Sedgwick County Elections. I've said many times how supportive I am of our local election process, and all of the staff, and all of the poll workers, the upcoming elections that need that extra funding. I really appreciate it, and I want to say thank you as a poll worker and also as a community citizen. Okay, here's the part where you see the normal me. As much as I appreciate your support on those things, I am concerned about the $400,000 reduction in the Crime Prevention Fund, and I would hope that we can get a question answered on what services or programs will be negatively impacted by that reduction, because crime prevention continues to trend at the top of what people look for when they talk about public safety. That's one. I've also expressed how previously, on and on for years, how much civic engagement means to me, and how I don't just speak for myself, I speak for the community and a lot of people that aren't able to engage in a lot of meetings, and the work it takes to get engaged and stay involved. So I'm also disappointed with the removal of the KPTS livestream and the Comprehensive Community-Wide Survey, when that's 80 and 45,000. Those are civic engagement tools that are necessary, and whether or not it's 1,000 people or 50,000 people, those are less people now that will be able to engage with the County Commission, because we're getting rid of those services. My colleague will be discussing the WSU mill levy that I've repeatedly spoken about for the last two years. And contrary to the last meeting, where Commissioner Meister commented, you know, that I speak on behalf of my commissioner, I speak on behalf of myself to the Commission, and for those that want to stay engaged with this process, my ideas are mine, my opinions are mine. I hope to see a future reduction in the mill levy. I also hope that the Collaboration Board meeting that I saw many of you at, you take into heart that some of these collaborations are cost reductions. When we look at how much Sedgwick County Elections does for this community and how much it costs, a lot of the services that we're providing, those dollars go into private organizations' pockets. I don't think that we should be using churches, I think we should be using public buildings, whether it's schools in all the districts that we have in the county, whether it's libraries, those are public buildings that the public pays for, and we shouldn't have public dollars, property tax dollars, going into private institutions so that we can go vote. Plus, churches aren't always a welcoming voting location for many people that aren't in the faith community. So I hope that you would look at that as a cost-sharing opportunity. I know Jim's going to ask if I support a sales tax. I do not. I don't support any new taxes. I would like, I know that we're running lean, and as efficient and as effective as we can. Austerity measures hurt in cutting places, we all have to tighten our belts. I think that we have to find places where we can do that, because we can't afford any more property taxes. Property taxes are probably the, behind public safety, property taxes are probably the number-two issue that you hear about. Until this body finds a way to deal with our housing shortage, our affordable housing shortage, our missing middle housing, our assessed values will continue to rise, and some of us don't look at our homes as an investment. I'm not selling my house, I want my children to have my home. I want it to pass down. It's an investment in my family, but not something that I'm selling. So my opinions regarding this increase for 911, I, I'm so grateful, a couple people have talked about this, we actually spoke about this at our Citizens Review Board for Wichita on Thursday, about a non-emergency line. WPD is working on that. Please, please have Sedgwick County Sheriff reach out, have Emergency Communications find out what we can do about a non-emergency line. They are already putting a bunch of work into it. I think that's all my comments. I'll stand for any questions, but I doubt there is me.
Okay, Faith, well, appreciate your feedback. Your wishes are come in. Commissioner Howe.
Thank you. Faith, thank you for being here. I love your passion, and I really do appreciate you coming out and actually sharing some Thanksgiving, that was really nice. Couple of things, the sales tax is not a new tax, it's a replacement of another existing tax, shifting from property taxes to sales taxes. And again, I would argue that property taxes hurts renters and homeowners equally. Sales taxes, if you are low-income, all the things you need to live, your rent, your mortgage, your insurance, your gas, electricity, water, sewer, trash, even your food, have no taxes on those items that you purchase, with the exception of county sales tax on 1% of the food is still on there. And if you live in a city that has a sales tax, it'd be the same for that city. But it's a lowering of property taxes, which I think helps, especially the low-income. If you go out and buy tennis shoes or pizza or something like that, then you're going to pay sales tax on those items. But for people who are low-income, that don't spend money on those types of things very much, if at all, this helps them hopefully stay in their home. So this is shifting from property taxes to sales taxes. That's the intent. It's tied together, and this takes all this discretionary spending in our budget, things like the zoo and expiration place and things like that, extension office, it shifts them over to a sales tax fund that is a zero-sum game set of dollars, that if there's a downturn in the economy, they all tighten their belts together, they cannot access property taxes to fill the void. And again, it's also got a sunset built in, so if we don't keep our promise for some reason, the people can always have the option of getting rid of it. So based on those terms, I hope that you'll give me a chance at least to explain it, so that people would not call it a new tax, because that's not what it is. It's a shifting of revenue from property taxes, the most hated tax, to sales taxes to the people who have the ability to make discretionary spending choices. There's that. On the Crime Prevention Fund, on page 376, it says, "Based on ongoing work with Wichita State University, grant funds will continue to be directed to programming that achieves the greatest crime prevention impact." And it goes on. So I guess my question would be, most of our crime prevention dollars are grant fund dollars. I'm looking at Lindsay to say, no, she says I'm not. She's, I'm incorrect. Okay, I'm incorrect. I have to get more data on that then. I care about crime prevention very much as well. In fact, in my sales tax initiative, a portion of the money, the revenue, would actually be for crime prevention, as well as the multi-agency center, as well as the extension office. And it actually names those things specifically in my resolution, so there would be money set aside for those things within the sales tax revenue fund. Okay, then I think you mentioned, I guess, KPTS. We had some data regarding our viewership on KPTS. Did you ever get to see that data?
I did, and that was where my comment came from, that if only a couple thousand people are watching that versus YouTube, that's a couple thousand people that won't be able to civically engage now, and it depends on how much dollars you decide civic engagement is worth.
Okay, I'll just ask you my two questions, then you already answered the one about sales tax. Do you support a tax increase then to support the spending for KPTS and Crime Prevention Fund?
No, I would reiterate my comments around the WSU one-and-a-half-mill levy, that's $12 million, and I would hope that the Commission would take action on that, so that those dollars can be implemented in things that the people want. And I would encourage you to put that out to a vote potentially, or maybe use that community survey that is going to be canceled to ask people what they want.
All right, thank you. So my questions, that sounds like Lindsay has a clarification. Do you want, do you want to explain the Crime Prevention Fund? Is that the case, Chairman?
Yes, sorry.
For the record, Lindsay Povrussel, CFO, I'm really afraid to touch this. Okay. So, sorry, it makes a lot of noise normally. So the county's Crime Prevention Fund that you're referencing on pages 376 and 377, you'll see is actually exclusively funded from County General Fund dollars, if you look at the bottom of page 377. So the way this program has historically worked is that this is overseen by the Department of Corrections. They go through a grant submission process, folks respond to that with RFPs, and then we engage WSU to evaluate the efficacy of those programs. So that's what this particular pot of funding is related to.
Okay. And Faith, I have the information, some more detailed information on the programs that are there. I will email that to you. You're welcome. Okay. And next up, Ms. Olivia Hayes.
Thank you, Lindsay, for moving this down for me. I don't have to move it back up. Good evening, County Commissioners, county staff, and members of the public. Thank you for holding this meeting and for hearing feedback about the county budget. For the record, my name's Olivia Hayes, I live off 95th Street, south of Derby. I'm not sure he claims me every day, but I am in Mr. Howell's district. I only have a couple of line items to talk about, and that is the WSU mill levy and the Sheriff's Office budget. So as some of you are already aware, my colleague and I brought up the WSU mill levy line item last year. At the request of a couple Commissioners, we have spent time discussing this item with county staff, WSU staff, and members of the public. Through those conversations, I want to share some things that I've learned. First, the state mandate that was imposed in order for WSU to become a Regents University back in the '60s states that the city will collect the 1.5 mills. It does not specifically state that the county has to be involved. As I understand it, in the late 1980s, the city of Wichita basically Tom Sawyer'd the county into taking over the entire mill levy responsibility. I learned that the city doesn't actually contribute anything to that fund, which was a surprise to me. The proposed WSU budget for 2026 is just over $12 million, which is actually an increase from last year slightly, and with just over $4 million of that being debt services. I propose that Sedgwick County reduce the WSU budget to just covering the debt service of $4 million. As I understand it, the county can actually remove itself from this burden with a simple two-thirds majority vote of the Commission. We are too late to make any changes for this year, but we do need to start the process in order to make a change in 2027. This is a time when everyone, you guys at home, you guys at work, everyone in the audience, everyone is having to tighten their belts, and this program simply does not have the ROI to justify its high cost. I'd much rather see us make a change with this budget than with some of the smaller budgets, like my colleague mentioned, KTPS. We're talking about a difference of an $8 million savings versus that $80,000 savings we just had, that actually affects people being engaged with their government. As my colleague suggested in a previous meeting, perhaps this is something we can work with the city on to figure out a better way to reallocate this line item. There's a lot of talk about shared services, right? So I do believe there is a pivot that makes sense here, where we maybe we don't have to leave them with the whole bag, but I think that there is a fairer, more equitable, maybe more efficient way that we can go about pivoting on this line item. So in regards to the 6% increase to the Sheriff's Office, I understand how scheduled merit increases work. However, you sent out a survey this year, asking for the public's input, and 50.34% of people wanted to see, of people who took the survey, wanted to see the Sheriff's Office budget reduced, and 44.90% wanted to see it remain the same as last year. So you're going against what, 95.24% of citizens who took that survey, the simulator, you're going against what 95% of them want, and I think that's concerning. Every single one of you has said to me, or a friend, or the public, or the media, or on social, that you want citizens to be more engaged. And if that is true, you have to take the efficacy of your existing program seriously. So I don't want to see the budget, the simulator, not get taken seriously, because we're going against, again, this is in a little margin, this is a 95% margin of people that did not want to see any more money go to that department. So I can stand for a few questions, and for Jim's question, as a libertarian on principle, I don't stand for any taxes, any version of them, no matter how you slice them, dice them, reallocate them, I just don't like them. So there's that question. All right, any questions?
Yeah, certainly. Commissioner Howe.
Thank you, Olivia. By the way, you're the fifth speaker out of six that are in my district tonight. Thank you very much.
Go six.
District Five is doing a great job this evening, I'm sorry, District Five is doing a great job this evening. Hey, just on the WSU thing, I know you already understand this, but just for everyone else's understanding, Wichita will pay the 1.5 mills, whether we levy the tax or Wichita City levies the tax. Unless they change the law, unless they change the law, the 1.5 mills will be levied on Wichitaans through the county or through their city. So the difference is that, I just checked, I think one mill levy for their current budget year, one mill levy for them is $5.4 million, for us it's $7.5. So if we were to lower it down, the most we could lower it down would be one mill, essentially, because we have a half a mill that's going to capital, we have long-term commitment to that. So if we lowered ours by one mill, let's say we lowered ours by 7.5 million, but they have to increase theirs by one mill to backfill that, that would be a reduction, if you will, for only people in the, only people in the unincorporated would have a tax reduction, because people in the city would still pay 1.5 mills, unless you change the state law. So that $2.1 million would be enjoyed by everybody outside of Wichita only. Again, it would be a tax cut, you're absolutely right. Now, I have been working with Andy Schlepp on this a little bit. I would say there is a, about half, about half the money, roughly about, not quite half, but let's just say about half the money goes to scholarships. Some of those scholarships right now go to graduate support, that means like people with masters, even PhD-level education already. I've asked him to see if he can shift all that to essentially lower-income people who need access to college. So they're trying to get to college, they're struggling with financial aid, how to get into college, and so this would be offered to them. Right now, it's right at $1,000 per student is what they get today, but again, by shifting those dollars, it would help out more of the lower-income folks, which I would support that more. Back to the public vote, I think there's a lot of people in this community that absolutely do support Wichita State University, and I don't know that it would pass necessarily, but unless we change state law, we're not really getting rid of the 1.5 mills, we're just shifting a small portion of that to Wichita only, so.
I just want to, if I can comment back, yeah, so I've looked into both, like, if we go back, if we get ourselves out of this and the city, you know, isn't excited about taking it over, and we can't come to a compromise that's more equal between the two of us, all the more reason to have this discussion, have this vote amongst yourselves now, because, I mean, you're about to make a joint legislative legislative platform. If it needs to happen, if we need to lobby, we have time, but not if we do it last minute. It has to be something where that conversation starts now. And in regards to the scholarships, I've spoken to someone in that department off-record at WSU. I have to say that for them because, you know, anyway. And those scholarships aren't actually like getting as utilized as much as they would even like to see. The feedback that I got, again, off the record, is just that they're able to find bigger scholarships through private avenues. So that's something that we could 100% fact-check with WSU and get more information, but I think that I love the plan of reallocating it, but I think there's something that we can do. And again, we're not talking about a little savings, we're talking about a big savings. Even if you include the, so there's the four mill that's the debt, and then there's that other 500, like even if you include that, it's still, we're nickel and diming public television and transportation where we could have a pretty decent payday here.
And for the record, are you advocating because I told you to?
No. I would dare anyone up there to tell me to advocate something.
Really clear, had nothing to do with you. Talk, talk.
Yes, correct. All right. Anything else?
Very good. Thank you, Olivia. Appreciate it. Okay, that concludes those that have signed up for, to address during the open hearing. I do want to make an opportunity, if anybody else is here that didn't sign up, maybe walked in late, we're more than welcome to hear. Okay. So officially close the public hearing, bring discussion to the bench. Any discussion before we adjourn the county hearing? Okay. Just for those on the Sedgwick County budget side of things, this is the, this concludes the first public hearing. The second public hearing will be August the 20th. It is the same day that we will actually adopt the budget. So we'll do the same thing we did here tonight, the morning at 9:00 AM on August the 20th, receive a public hearing, receive public feedback, close the public hearing, and then we'll have discussion and entertain motions about the final budget adoption. So that'll, the second one will happen on August the 20th. Okay? So let me make a motion to receive and file public comment.
Second?
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Blubow.
Aye.
Commissioner Weiss.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay. Again, those, those that shared public comment, we appreciate that deeply. We will officially adjourn the Sedgwick County Government Meeting and call to order the governing body of Fire District Number One. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Blubow.
Present.
Commissioner Weiss.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Chairman Beatty.
Present. Next item, please.
New business, I have a public hearing regarding the 2026 Fire District One budget.
Manager Stolz.
Chairman and Commissioner Tom Stolz, County Manager's Office, again. This evening is the first public hearing of the 2026 recommended budget for Fire District Number One. It totals $31,184,850. This budget will be supported with a property tax levy of $23,650,889, which will require a mill levy of approximately 16.75 mills, based on the estimated assessed valuation and subject to technical adjustments, recommending again you to, for you to open a public hearing, receive comments, and then close the public hearing once that is over.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Commissioners, any questions for Tom on the Fire District? Okay, seeing none, we will officially open the public hearing for the governing body of Fire District Number One. No one has signed up for public comment for the Fire District, so I'd be happy to open up and see if there would be anyone that would like to supply and provide public comment for the Fire District. Going once. Okay.